All right, we ready?
Yep.
And I'll call the March 7th, 2017 regular council meeting to order. Would members please denote your presence by depressing your yes switch?
All council members are present.
Thank you.
Just so everybody knows, council meetings are also televised and can be viewed on cable channel 192. Is there anybody out there who wants to lead the pledge of allegiance for us? Maybe somebody towards the back on the right side in some uniforms? Come on down, guys.
I know a couple of these guys here.
We got a whole crew. This is good.
Do you guys want to just stand there at the podium to do it? Well, up to the microphone if you want. Or you can come up here and use my microphone. It's up to you. Okay, please join us in the pledge of allegiance. And guys, you can start us off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the February 21st, 2017, regular council meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune on March 3rd, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Pacheco, seconded by Councilman Hopkins. Corrections? Please cast your vote and please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the March 7th, 2017, bills and claims as audited by City Manager McDonald.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Morgan. Abstentions? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Okay, sounds like we have some additional special people in the audience tonight. This evening, we have invited the Kelly Walsh DECA Club to share with us about their program and how their season went. Would you please come forward? And DECA is Distributive Education Clubs of America, which I don't know if I actually knew that, so welcome.
Not well-known, actually. Hi, I'm Alexis Arnold. I am the State Officer at Kelly Walsh for DECA. And first to start off, I just would like to thank you for recognizing November as DECA Month for the City of Casper. To start off to kind of explain what DECA is, we began our season with a fall conference. This year was held here in Cheyenne, or here in Casper at the Parkway Plaza. We start off, we call it like getting your feet in the water. You start off with a role play. And you walk in and you get like a 10-minute prep, and then you have 10 minutes to present your idea to a judge. And you're usually a manager, talking to a CEO, solving a problem and such. And then after our fall conference, we start getting prepared for state, which involves projects that are, can be 30 pages long with 15-minute presentations, preparing for tests, which are varying topics like hospitality and tourism, business administration, culture exams, stuff like that. And then we go to state, which this year was held in Cheyenne, Wyoming, and we did really well. We had 49 top performers. We had, of our 19 members, we had 30 finalists, I believe, or 30 different topics for finalists. And we had 11 qualifiers for nationals. Nationals will be at the end of April, and we'll have 11 members from Kelly Walsh participating. So we did really well. Me and my two teammates Shawna Roush and Ally Subcek are competing in nationals in an independent business plan. And then we have Thane Macy, who's going to present what a role play is to you guys.
Wonderful. We're ready. Good evening.
So yeah, just what a role play is with DECA is you're given a situation that, so for my, what I won at first place was the individual accounting application series. And so, using that as an example, what we do during a role play is you're given a certain situation or scenario in which you need to act as a person that has, to do something that with accounting knowledge or has to apply accounting skills. And these are just to show, these are just to help you with demonstrating your application of that knowledge. So in my case, I was given a scenario where I needed to talk about petty cash, which is important for accountants to know about. And it just helps you demonstrate that knowledge. And it's a, it's a really great learning experience. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do you ladies have anything else you want to share?
I don't believe so. We appreciate your time.
Okay, so how about a Kodak moment? Picture time?
I don't know if you know what that is.
Okay. How about an iPhone moment? Now, do you guys want the whole council or?
That we would like to present to you guys if you don't.
Fabulous, please.
This is from Cheyenne, Wyoming. This is after we got our finalist awards and such.
Okay, great.
I think they ought to come up here and take a picture with you.
All right, so I hear we should hit by the "Why-ocity" sign, so come on up and let's do a quick picture.
Should we take a selfie?
He looked confused when she said that.
Yeah, let's keep it serious.
Okay.
You can get up there, right?
You want up here, Ray?
No question.
Okay. Oh, actually, can we move the chair? I'm sorry.
Please, Ms. Thompson.
One, two, three, one more. One, two, one, one more. That's got to be it.
Thank you.
Just for the record, I'm still a youngster, so I don't know, Kodak. Maybe I'm getting old.
I want to check the record.
All right, please read the consent agenda titles.
Establish March 21st, 2017, as the public hearing date for consideration of the vacation and replat creating Lot 7, Block 200, City of Casper Edition, and a zone change of proposed Lot 7 to PH Park Historic. Establish April 4th, 2017, as the public hearing date for consideration of issuance of new restaurant liquor license number 33, Firehouse Pizza Wood Fired, doing business as Firehouse Pizza Wood Fired, located at 395 Newport Suite Number 1.
The Chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, establish the public hearing dates just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Murphy. All right. Abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote and please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
And now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the annexation and plat of the Wolf Creek 9 Edition. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
Your Honor, we have three exhibits at this time. Exhibit number one, correspondence from Liz Becker to VH McDonald dated February 17th, 2017. Exhibit number two, an affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated February 13th, 2017. And exhibit number three, Wolf Creek 9 Edition Annexation Report dated January 2017. And that's all the exhibits.
Thank you, sir. Mr. City Manager, report.
Your Honor, Mesa Development Owner of the Wolf Creek 9 Edition located near Talon Drive has applied for an annexation of 1.467 acre parcel of land to be incorporated in the Wolf Creek 9 Edition. Pursuant to the Wyoming statutes pertaining to annexations, council must find that any annexation complies with certain conditions related to the suitability and feasibility of the annexation. In addition, the council must also accept the annexation report that was prepared to outline the costs and benefits of the annexation of the city and the future owners of the property to be annexed. Staff report identifies the findings that are being presented to demonstrate that the annexation does comply with state statute.
Thank you. At this time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the issues involving the Wolf Creek 9 Edition, please approach the lectern. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor? This time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the issues involving Wolf Creek 9 Edition, please approach the lectern. Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? There being no one to speak for or against the issues involving the Wolf Creek 9 Edition, I now declare the public hearing closed. Please read the resolution by title only.
A resolution finding facts pursuant to Wyoming Statute 151402 regarding the annexation of a 1.467 acre parcel being included in a replat creating the Wolf Creek 9 Edition to the City of Casper, Nettona County, Wyoming.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the resolution just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Pacheco, seconded by Councilman Hopkins. Discussion. Amendments? Please cast your vote and please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance approving an annexation, vacation, replat, and subdivision agreement for the proposed Wolf Creek 9 Edition in the City of Casper, Wyoming.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve on third reading the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Morgan, seconded by Councilman Powell. Discussion. Amendments? Please cast your vote and please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
And now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the 2017 National Electrical Code. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
Your Honor, we have one exhibit, exhibit number one, which is correspondence from Liz Becker to VH McDonald dated February 28th, 2017.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, report.
Your Honor, the National Electric Code is revised every three years, and the State of Wyoming has adopted the 2017 National Electric Code as a minimum code for the entire state effective July 1st, 2017. Accordingly, following that state's act, the state's action, staff and the city contractors' licensing and appeals board have reviewed the 2017 edition of the National Electric Code and recommend the council adopt the code.
Thank you. At this time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of this issue, please approach the lectern. Anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor? Okay, at this time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to please approach the lectern. Anybody who wishes to speak in opposition? There being no one to speak for or against the issues involving the 2017 National Electrical Code, I now declare the public hearing closed. Please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 15.28 of the Casper Municipal Code in adopting the 2017 edition of the National Electrical Code.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve on first reading the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Discussion. Councilman Powell.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just want to make sure, have we had any concerns voiced from contractors regarding additional costs that they're going to incur with these changes?
Mr. City Manager.
Your Honor, Dan Elston, the city's building inspector and building official's been here. The Contractors Board did, Licensing and Appeals Board did review it, and Dan could tell you if there was any comments that came from contractors.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. As VH has said, I am the city building official and replace Doug Barrett in that capacity. We brought this in front of the Contractors Licensing Board and talking with them, plus also talking, we have a electrical contractor on the Contractors Licensing Board, also with the electrical inspectors that are on staff for the City of Casper. The costs, both commercially and residentially, will be minimal with all these changes. There are approximately 1,500 changes in the code from the 2014 National Electrical Code to the 2017. That sounds like an exorbitant amount, but it is been up to 3,000. And actually, this is just an analysis of the code changes in that. So it's not the actual code itself, it's just the analysis of the changes. So, so it's quite extensive, and it would take a lot of study, but we have not had any feedback from contractors that are required to have 16 hours of continuing education every three years, so they are well-versed in these changes when they are forthcoming.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Amendments? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
On the agenda tonight is a public hearing for the transfer of retail liquor license number eight from Z Financial Administration and Management, doing business as Z Financial, located at 1121 Wilken Circle, to Good to Go Stores LLC, doing business as Good to Go. The applicant misstated its address in the application, and as such, it is necessary to cancel the public hearing and reset it to a future date in order to correct the application. The Chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, cancel today's public hearing and establish a new public hearing date for April 4th, 2017, to consider the revised application.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Morgan and seconded by Councilman Johnson. Discussion. Amendments? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
And now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the issuance of a new restaurant liquor license number 32 to Kodo Restaurant located at 5091 East Second Street. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
Your Honor, we have four exhibits for this case. Exhibit number one, correspondence from Tracy L. Belzer to VH McDonald dated February 8th, 2017. Exhibit number two, an affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated February 27th, 2017. Exhibit number three, an affidavit of website publication as published on the City of Casper website dated February 8th, 2017. And exhibit number four, a liquor license application filed January 12th, 2017. Those are all the exhibits.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, report.
Your Honor, an application has been received from Kodo Casper Incorporated, doing business as Kodo Restaurant, and this is located at 5091 East Second Street. This is an application for a restaurant liquor license, so it has restrictions on, on the percent of alcohol sales to food. And also, there's limitations about no off-site sale of alcohol, so it's onsite intended to be eating with meals. The necessary advertising and publication's been done, and I'd like you to reconsider.
Thank you. At this time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the issuance of restaurant liquor license number 32, please approach the lectern. Anybody that wishes to speak in favor? This time, I'd ask if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition, to please approach the lectern. Anyone to speak in opposition? There being no one to speak for or against the issues, the issuance of restaurant liquor license number 32, I now declare the public hearing closed. The Chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, authorize the issuance of restaurant liquor license number 32.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Powell. Thank you, guys. Discussion. Councilman Powell.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm sure I, along with others, would be interested in knowing what kind of a restaurant are we talking about? What kind of food is Kodo Restaurant served? Do we know anything about this?
Is there anyone in the audience from Kodo that could come fill us in a little bit?
Oh, you thought you would escape this.
Good evening.
So, good evening. So, I think we serve across all Asian food. It's include Japanese, Taiwanese, and some, um, maybe, and Chinese. So it's all kind of Asian cuisine.
Okay. Any other questions?
Since I'm going to South Korea next week, one of their delicacies is deep-fried entrails.
I think we will bring a lot different here.
Wonderful. Thanks for coming down tonight, we appreciate it. Any other discussion or amendments? I can't get that out of my head now, Charlie. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Please read the consent ordinance on second reading by title only.
An ordinance approving a zone change for the Wolf Creek 9 Edition subdivision in the City of Casper, Wyoming.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve on second reading the consent ordinance just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Johnson and seconded by Councilman Hopkins. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Council will now consider consent resolutions. Please read the consent resolutions by title only.
Item 9A1, a resolution for the termination of the memorandum of understanding between CRU Casper LLC, doing business as Parkway Plaza Casper Resort Spa and Convention Center, and the City of Casper, Wyoming. Item 9A2, a resolution declaring certain city-owned property as surplus property and authorizing sales same to the highest bidder. Item 9A3, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Headquest Construction, Inc., for the K Street Improvements Phase 1 Project. Item 9A4, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Trito Construction LLC for the special waste facility parking lot expansion project. Item 9A5, a resolution authorizing a professional services contract with Recycling Industrial Repairs, Inc., for repairing baler gather cylinders. Item 9A6, a resolution authorizing a contract for professional services with Goldr Associates, Inc., for the closed bail fill post-closure environmental monitoring and reporting. Item 9A7, a resolution approving a loan agreement with Casper Housing Authority for the provision of permanent supportive housing for military veterans within the City of Casper under the requirements of the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development.
The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the consent resolution just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Morgan, seconded by Councilman Murphy. Abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Council will now consider minute action items. Please read the consent minute action titles.
Item 10A1, rejecting all bids received for the Casper Ice Arena Chiller System Replacement Project. Item 10A2, authorizing the appointment of new member Trudy Holt House to the Downtown Development Authority Board of Directors.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent minute action agenda items just read.
So moved.
Moved by Vice Mayor Pacheco and seconded by Councilman Huckabee. Abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. One more time, Councilman Murphy. All right. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Thank you. Now's the time we'd invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to council to come forward. As stated on the first page of the agenda, we'd ask the following. Please give us your name and address. Council will not respond to personnel matters. Those will be referred to the City Manager. We may not be able to answer some of your questions, and we'd ask that you keep your presentations limited to five minutes. Good evening.
Good evening. John Lichty, 4811 East 20th Street, Casper, Wyoming, 82609. Here on behalf of the Casper Housing Authority, I am the Board Chair.
I'm Kim Summerall-Wright. I'm the Executive Director of the Casper Housing Authority, and I live at 145, well, I don't, but 145 North Durbin, here in Casper.
And we just wanted to thank the council, the City of Casper, for the consideration of the loan to purchase the old Roosevelt High School to use for our VA center that we have plans for and have been submitted.
I think this is probably a pretty exciting project for everyone. I know I'm pretty excited, so thank you, guys, for taking this on and doing something so wonderful in the community. Any questions or comments from council? Councilman Murphy.
I'm really excited what they're doing. It's just awesome. And I'm, to the count of the privilege to be able to vote in favor of this. This is very good. Thanks, Kim.
All right. Thank you, guys, for coming, and thanks for all your hard work. Okay, who else in the audience? This guy looks kind of familiar. It's a good thing there's law enforcement in the back.
Steve Cathy, 2141 Cornwall, Casper. I'm here tonight to discuss the recycling program for the electronics that you folks are looking at canceling. I know you're fixing to have another work session on it. You normally don't allow people to speak during work session. I may be out of town, because I'm not having fun now. So, I thought I would come tonight, express my views and my concerns. First of all, the citizens asked for the program. So the council at the time tried to enact and listen to the citizens. At the same time, there was a 12-cent increase to the sanitation bills, which was supposed to pay for that. And over the years, through the rate model, which is what is used to set sanitation rates, those increases from the 28,000 that the 12 cents generates up to supposedly the 56,000 that the contract was for should have been included in those rates. So, those things are all in there. Also, the utility fund, which pays for that, is an independent business-type entity. It does not rely on the general fund for its funds. Therefore, cutting that program does nothing for balancing the budget. The citizens are paying for that program when they pay their sanitation bills. The current rate structure should be taking into account those day-to-day operating expenses, plus building reserves for future capital projects like the replacement of sanitation trucks, the opening and closings of cells, new buildings, maintenance on equipment. That all should be in there, and so that all should be in that fund, and that fund over time, and the rates are set to slowly build that reserve fund. So then the next question becomes, or well, there's two questions, actually. One, are you canceling that because it was a bad contract? Which, if it's a bad business contract, well and good. We ought to be sitting down and renegotiating that contract to get a good business deal between the city and the recycler. By the same token, if it's just for the saving of money, well, either the reserve fund is going to build quicker, or the citizen should receive a rate reduction come the next cycle, because that money was planned in there. Otherwise, it starts to wind up looking like this is nothing more than a political matter that is being generated to try to show leadership, because the last council was bad-mouthed for poor leadership, that this winds up becoming a political issue that is, we're going to show that we are leaders and we're going to cut budget, which, in essence, this has nothing to do with the budget. So, I thank you for your time.
Questions for Mr. Cathy? Councilman Morgan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for, Mr. Cathy, for coming here tonight, I appreciate it. As we mentioned during that meeting, when we did vote down that particular contract, we did think it was a, it was a bad idea. I did bring up some other ideas that city hopefully is pursuing, and that we will bring up during a work session at some point. And I did bring up other examples, such as the City of Cheyenne, they take care of it themselves. They drive down there, they drive to Fort Collins, and they dispose of the electronic waste themselves. I think there are some other options that council could possibly pursue, and something that we might pursue at a later work session. So I appreciate you coming down here, I appreciate your concern, and I think those will be addressed.
I, the one thing I do wish is I do know that Vice Mayor Pacheco moved to table the motion for further discussion. I wish that would have happened rather than just voting it down. That was, so I do appreciate your, your leadership from that standpoint. And basically, too, I understand that Councilman Murphy, yourself, Councilman Morgan, and Councilwoman Huckabee have never been through a budget cycle. But everybody else up there has been through at least two budget cycles, either as a council member or as a department head, and they should have understood that this would do nothing to balance the budget. So, thank you.
It's never too late for us to correct going down the wrong path, so we will get back on the right path. Thanks for coming. Anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak to council? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Just a couple of quick questions here. I've been under my five here, Mayor, too, real fast, but Tracy Lamont, 721 East 12th Street. I'm the single largest property owner in Block 56 of the Butler Edition. I think I have either two and a half or three and a half lots, I can't remember for sure. But I'm still really concerned about this Worthington Park issue. I got another notice. I got another notice. Why do we have another hearing? Have I missed something? For Lot 7? You know, I'm in the radius here, that's right out toward Lockhart's back door, and I think a lot of people have been led to believe this whole issue is behind us, but obviously, it isn't. So, I'm here tonight to ask a couple questions, you don't have to answer them right now, but I'm really concerned about lots 1 through 6 in Washington Park, and lots 8-plus in the Washington Park area. And I'd like some straight answers on that. Don't eat them tonight. I'll visit with your staff, I'll get that answer, the good people. I have a real question here, you know, I know the Downtown Development Authority, I watch that really close, I know you guys are partners in that, but where does Brandon Dagel fit into that? Is he not employed by the Downtown Development Authority? Where does he fit? Is he on a board?
He's the chair of the...
He's the chairman?
Chair, yeah.
Okay. That answered that. I think that's, but when's this hearing coming up? This, for Lot 7? And have I understood this right, that, that that's for the vacation of what was proposed? And then, we're going to be guaranteed only Lot 7 is going to be park historic? What about the rest? I'm worried about the Slid Hill? I'm very worried about, you know, my ex-wife's grandmother lived right in the corner of Jefferson and 12th Street. Pretty good-sized property, only had the fourplex there in the corner of the house. But, you know, that half a block there, or whatever runs dead ends right in Washington Park, has been, and I've got the plot, the original plot, for that Washington Park, going back to the beginning of time when all of that was subdivided. I've had that for some time, I had to look into this, and I've looked at recent surveys, and they're incorrect. They're terribly incorrect. They don't even have my lots right. I ended up at 30-foot of Bonnie Bay. I think I own the whole thing, but I don't know for sure, there's, you know, something wrong. I want to look into that, but anyhow, whatever happens in Washington Park is right out my front window. And, you know, I'm not single highest property tax owner in that neighborhood over there, and I'm concerned. I'm very concerned. Can I, excuse me, I didn't appreciate you shutting me out for five minutes after those softball people babble-dong for about 20 or 30. I come here very serious, I come here as a good citizen, you're all my friends up there. I met Jesse last week, he's a great addition, I didn't meet you, ma'am, I've heard good things about you, too. I don't come here to blow smoke. But, you know, I'm very concerned. I want to ask one other question. King Boulevard out here in the Amoco Edition by the golf course, is that named after Martin Luther King, or Bob King, of the planning commission?
I can't answer.
I'd like an answer on that, the history, you don't have to tell me tonight, but I'm here to propose. I think it ought to be called Martin Luther King Boulevard, because we don't have one of those here. And I think that'd be real appropriate. You know, I can remember Ernest Wolkerston leading the march when John F. Kennedy was shot, I was my father's boss, he ran for governor in 1964 and he got defeated, and he was upset when he left there. He went to teach law at Harvard, but he was way ahead of the curve in civil rights. My mother made us go sit through, out of turn, and we marched in that march. So, you know, I think we need to recognize a few things in this community we haven't done in the past, I'm just throwing that out there. But it kind of hit me, I was at the planning commission, because Mr. King shut me out for five minutes when I started shooting some names out there. Now, let's start looking at us peasants out here, okay? Just because we have certain names tied to our last name, doesn't mean that we need to be showing preferential treatment. And I'm not going to embarrass anybody in that, but there's some people who have major conflicts of interest catering to select groups. We need to knock that off. We need to knock that off. And, you know, there's no secret around telling what my background is at this point in time. I wear many hats. Wear many hats. So, I'll save you some discussion with that. I had one last thing, it's kind of slipping me here, but I appreciate the time you give me.
I want to make sure you get your answers, are you going to reach out?
Yeah, I wrapped up, and I'll move on. Charlie, there's not rumors out there. I took that, I took exception to what you said last week, I took that personally. Hopefully, you weren't directing that to me. Chris, I appreciated your candor of the questions you asked about Washington Park. We don't need to be screwing around with Washington Park. Let's put it to bed, thank you.
So I can assure you that we are not affecting the park at all, and I'm sure that we meant in no way to offend you, Mr. Lamont, so I think we're doing our best up here to help everybody. Who else in the audience would like to speak to counsel? Okay, we'll go ahead and go around the table, and we will start with Councilman Hopkins.
I have an Amoco Joint Powers Board meeting next week, and I think that's all I have, other than I wanted to mention that we're going to have another group come in at the end of the month to use the biathlon course, and this is a national game, so just like to welcome to the biathlon course.
Wonderful. Councilman Walsh.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just have down on my list, even prior to listening to Mr. Lamont, I think we would put a lot of people at ease if we did manage to cover that whole area, maybe even map it or something, if we're, when we talk about Washington Park and replant it back to park historic, so everybody knows exactly what we're looking at.
Okay.
Thank you, that's all.
Councilman Powell.
My apologies, Tracy. No, it was not intended, not directed at you. I just think it's important, sometimes people think there's all kinds of private conversations going on behind the scenes, and that there might be an agenda that's in place, and with this particular matter, it's really just about aligning the streets to where they really are. And so, there is no hidden agenda, and there's, there's going to be an open discussion of this matter on April 4th, is that correct?
Believe so.
And, let's see, what else do I have to say? Blocking. I think we're good, thank you.
If you think of something else, just wave and I'll come back.
I will, I'll let you know. Senior moment.
Councilman Huckabee.
Mr. Cathy and Mr. Lamont, I agree with both of you on each of those matters. I live two blocks from Washington Park, and I kick my daughter out because we don't have a yard, so I say go up there and play. And I feel like, as soon as that matter was brought to my attention within our neighborhood, I came here and asked questions, and I feel very confident that it's going to remain a park as it should be. I'm very excited to attend the Women of Distinction Award on Thursday, and honor some of the women within our community that have done some great things, and hopefully, some people can attend that.
Wonderful. Councilman Powell.
I thought it would be good to clarify, thank you, Your Honor, my apologies for that, to clarify to folks who haven't been following this issue of the Housing Authority loan, that this is simply a matter of us loaning some money out of our perpetual care fund and actually getting a little bit higher return on our interest via this loan than we would have had we left it there. So there are no city funds involved, other than making this loan. And I am excited, as is Councilman Murphy, and I thank everyone else up here, to be part of this project, and I believe you folks are just doing a wonderful thing, Mr. Lichty. So, thank you.
Okay. Did you have anything else, Councilman Huckabee? Okay. Councilman Murphy?
Thank you, Your Honor. As to the recycling of E-waste, I just want to point out that not everybody takes their electronic waste where it's supposed to go to be recycled. So, for those who do, at least if it's here in the line cells, we know where it's going. If we ship it off, we don't know where it's going, for sure, unless we check it out thoroughly, and then, maybe Mr. Beamer's done that, but we, since it's coming back to topic for the work session, I guess we can hash it out there, but, and if there's a rate decrease to pass back to the citizens, then that would be nice, too. So, it doesn't always have to be about the budget. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Johnson.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Councilman Morgan.
Nothing new tonight.
Vice Mayor Pacheco.
I just have various meetings coming up the next few days, just a couple speaking engagements, I won't bore everybody with where I'm going or what I'm doing, but, yeah. Needless to say. But, as always, thanks, Steve, for coming up and talking, Mr. Lamont, we appreciate sharing that, coming out here and having that conversation. And I think it always is good that they have conversations, do that, also, the Boy Scouts, it's good to have you guys here, glad you're here, hope we didn't bore you to death. Was it exciting as you would have hoped?
Mr. Vice Mayor, did you tell them they all have to give speeches now?
So now they got to come up here and give speeches.
There you go.
No. Two of the boys go to school with my son, so, anyway, good job, guys, thanks for coming.
All right. The next meeting to the city council will be a work session to be held at 4:30 Tuesday, March 14th, 2017, in the council's meeting room, and a regular council meeting to be held at 6:00 PM Tuesday, March 21st, 2017, in the council chambers. The Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Murphy, seconded by Councilman Morgan. Please cast your vote. Councilman Walsh, will you punch yours again? Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Thank you all for coming, we are adjourned.
That was almost a record.
I know, you're doing good.
I'm liking it.
I'm liking it.
Indeed.